Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 15th meeting of the Quincy Planning Board. I'm going to start by taking role.
Madam Chair, I see President.
Member Kelly present.
Member Bealn present.
Member Mead present.
Member Foley present.
Okay, great. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore required advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. The Board requests that you please be courteous to the proceedings and turn off your cellphones. The Planning Board reserves the right to amend this or oaths through the Chair. Some witnesses call for the production of papers, cross-examine any person giving testimony during the proceedings, declare recess, limit debate, inspect the subject site or buildings during reasonable hours, and adjourn the hearings for cause. The order of business will be as announced by the Chair. All questions should be directed through the Chair. Any person wishing to speak, please raise your hand for recognition. When recognized, please stand, state your name and address, your specific interests in the proceedings, and special credentials, if any pertaining to the presentation. Please speak slowly and within the context of the hearing matter. The hearing is being stenographed and taped for the public record. The Planning Board reserves the right to exclude any unnecessary, irrelevant, repetitive, or harassing presentations. First, we have a business meeting item, which is to vote on the minutes of the September 17th meeting of the Planning Board. Is there a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So that's unanimous. As Solicitor Timmons is here, we're going to take the matters out of order. The first will take a 1620 and 1630 Hancock Street, Planning Board Case Number 2025 COC-01. Attorney Mahoney.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Attorney David Mahoney, I represent the applicant. Since the last time we were before you, we've gone back and forth with the peer reviewer and with the department heads, and we've been able to address all their concerns. One of the biggest concerns this Board has, as you'll recall, was the access on Hancock Street. I know that was a problem for everybody. And to that end, we've been working with the Mayor's Office and the Solicitor and the Planning Department. And I know the solicitors here would like to explain where we are on that. So Jim Timmons.
Okay. Good evening.
Evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. As Attorney Mahoney, I beg your pardon, I'm Attorney James Timmons. I'm our city Solicitor, and I'm here tonight to provide you with an overview of some work that I got involved with relative to property on Mechanic Street behind the locus. The Board raised concerns about Hancock Street impacts and access points. The Mayor had those same concerns. And in looking at the matter, the Mayor asked me to reach out to and work with the owner of property on Mechanic Street, which, there are two properties behind the proposed project here, project site. And one of those properties is actually kind of tucked into the L-shaped corner, so that's the one we focused on. I was able to work out an agreement with the current owners to buy the property. I have the agreement here more as a prop. Anyone who's done real estate, you know how these agreements can go. This is a very basic standard form. There's not any contingencies. The city is going to buy 29 Mechanic Street, and we are then going to work on easement access. There's going to be two easements in particular that we're looking to work out with the developer. We're going to have an easement from Mechanic Street behind the project. I don't know if someone, if Mr. King could help with a visual, but I may walk over just to orient folks, and I'll come back to the microphone. This is the site I'm talking about, behind the locus. And you can see how this is an L-shaped site, so we picked the property tucked right in here. And then we have Hancock Street here, and up the top is an area that we are now going to take offline as a result of the acquisition of the Mechanic Street property. The Board members raised a concern, and as I said, the Mayor had the same concern, that the curb cut on Hancock was not a good location. I understand there was a concern about having a transformer pad where it was located. And then, in addition, there was a trash pickup scenario that was going to play out there. I'm not sure of the exact details. Well, by acquiring the lot behind the project, what's happening is, again, I'll approach and then I'll come back. These aren't precise locations, but the transformer pad's going to be moved behind the building. And then, in addition, there's a drive aisle, it's 14 feet wide, that's going to provide access for deliveries to the site, and it's going to be part of the trash pickup that's going to be set up. The particular details of how that site's going to be used by the parties, you know, there's a proposal there, and you see some green space out onto Mechanic. So what we're trying to do is have the site provide a little extra green space, help to mitigate the impact of the project. But in addition, it'll take, the need for that alley on Hancock Street is eliminated. So we'll be able to take that offline, and we will be able to eliminate the curb cut. So we believe, or at least I should say, I'll speak for myself here, I think that I've solved a major issue here. I had contact with Madam Chair. Obviously, you know, because of the open meeting law, we limit what we do. But I had some contact with Madam Chair, just to particularize what the concerns of the Board were. And then I commend Mr. Stevens, who joins you, Mr. Fatsies, who's smart enough to stay back in the audience, and then Mr. King. The three of us, the three folks from the Planning Department met with me three or four times this summer to work this all out. They did a good job. So I can tell you that with certainty, the land on Mechanic Street is going to be acquired. The city is going to retain ownership, because one of the easements that we're going to work with the developer on is going to run during the site work on the project. It's going to run out to Hancock Street. The city wants to retain the ability to have utility easements connecting, you know, from Mechanic out to Hancock for future development. So we're going to have an easement that goes across the development site, and then the developer's going to have necessary easements on Mechanic. We're going to work all that out, so that they have the ability to use Mechanic for the needs of the project. So I don't know if there are any questions, but that's the overview. And, you know, the one big sticking point, your Chair was on this after the August meeting with me, and the Mayor has been on me about this, to make sure that we got the signed PNS. This is fully executed. Because it's a negotiated agreement, and it's not been consummated yet, it's not a public record, and with all due respect to the Board, rather than making it part of the record here where someone could be able to have backdoor access, I'm assuring you that I have this agreement. And if anyone wanted to look at the particulars, you'd be welcome to come to the office to do so. I don't know if that's necessary, but I'm happy to oblige if you wish to. So if there are any questions about this, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do they have any questions? Yes.
So the utility easement, just so I understand, there won't be any curb cut at all? There's only going to be utilities easement there? No vehicle easements? City or otherwise are going up and down that alleyway?
That's correct. When I was initially discussing this, there was a question raised about the fire department having access down there in the event of an emergency, and I guess it's pretty readily addressed. They just need something, they have something that could be placed at the curb, so they can get right over. So yes, it's being completely shut off.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, no.
Are they going to asphalt that, Jim, or is that going to be grass?
Do you mind? Could you use the, I have a bit of a hearing problem.
I'm sorry. The question was, I guess Counselor Mahoney may be able, are they going to, is that going to be grass, or is that going to be pavement? Asphalt? What's that going to be?
Mechanic?
Nope, the easement.
Oh.
The easement that runs along.
Oh, it's subsurface, yeah. It'll come under the project. Do you mean the easement for the city out to Hancock?
Yes.
Yeah. No, it'll be, that'll be an underground, that's for all underground infrastructure, to the extent we do it. It'll be under the side.
They're going to still have the surface part of that easement. So you have an underground easement?
The drive aisle?
The drive aisle where the transformer was originally going to go, and where it was going to, and where they were going to put the trash. Is that going to be?
Well, that's. Go ahead. They haven't decided yet if they're going to pave it or grass it. That's something.
Making a dog walk, or something like that?
Well, the dog park will be down on 29 Mechanic now.
Okay.
That could be a backup dog walk, though.
Oh, questions about what you're going to do with the Hancock Strip? Is that what it was?
Yeah, that was a question. Sorry.
Is it going to be grassed or paved?
Yeah. It's part of the project, but it's not part of anything I've done, and there's no easement interest or anything.
So the easement that the city has, does it go from Mechanic Street to Hancock Street?
That's what's going to happen. Somewhere on the site on Mechanic out to Hancock, but we have to work out that detail. It'll be part of, I mean, Attorney Mahoney and I didn't talk about the particulars, because it's going to be during the site work.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just follow, I had the exact same questions. And, you know, the curb cut's going to be eliminated. So they are going to end up with that significant piece of property running along there, and I see doors going out onto it. There had been question as to whether or not, you know, they might at some future point put a restaurant or some sort of an operation there on that first floor corner. That would be a nice, you know, if they, if, instead of just being a paved alley, just a skinny alley that really serves no purpose at all, you know, I'm sure BGI is good at this, but that could be a nice amenity for that area between the two lots.
For the alleyway?
Yeah, yeah, 100%. I mean, it was going to be a drive alley with utility trucks pulling up and down. Now it's going to have no access to Hancock, except emergency.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've got the doors coming in and out off that, you know, to the point of my colleagues, that could be something nice.
Yeah. So if there were a restaurant on the corner, you'd say, you could then have exterior dining?
Put some tables out there in the nice weather, and, you know.
Sure. I'm sure they'll consider that.
Because now it's kind of like a no man's land.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, it would be nice to, let's say Hancock Street, it'd be nice to see something nice, yeah.
Yeah. I'm sure they'll consider that.
Thank you, yeah, great.
Yes, I just have one question. So I think when we had spoke, you discussed covenants running with the land about to ensure compliance, so I just didn't know if you could touch on that.
Well, in reviewing the language with planning this afternoon, after our final discussion, they put some of that into their recommendation. And then going forward, I've spoken with Attorney Mahoney, and if there's an issue when we're drawing up the easement, because that's a recorded instrument as well, we put the conditions in there.
Okay, great, yes. And this, as you mentioned, the decision of the Board gets recorded with the registry, so that runs with the land?
Yeah, there was a preference expressed by Mr. Fatsies and Mr. Stevens, that we get it into this, so that's what happened. Consolidation.
Perfect. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. Is that it? Any more questions now?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing. Anybody else like to speak on this application? It's 1620 and 1630 Hancock Street, Planning Board Case Number 2025 COC-01. We do have sign-in sheets along the window as well. You're welcome to sign in. And we'll give it a second call. Yep, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name's Dan Cody. I'm a business agent for Boston Pipe, this local 537, and also representative of the Quincy South Shore Building Trades Union. Whereas we represent as a building trades, over 1,000 members of the city of Quincy, I just wanted to ask the question if they were going to consider community standards for this project, and if we could get a sit-down, possibly with the social building trades and the developer, if that would be an option.
Great. Sure Attorney Mahoney would like to speak to you about that after, outside the public hearing.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this? 1620 and 1630 Hancock Street, Certificate of Consistency, Planning Board Case Number 2025 COC-01. Okay, seeing none. All right. Yes?
Yes. I didn't realize, like I was talking to you guys before at the last meeting in August, you know, this is a substantial building that's going up in the center of Quincy, and, you know, the men and women of the city of Quincy would love to work on this project. So please, when you're considering a contractor, consider a contractor that can hire the men and women that live in the city of Quincy, and we can build that building. So just please take that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, with that, Attorney Mahoney, if you're comfortable with us closing, we'll.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Great, thank you. Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And does the department have a recommendation?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you to the Board. After consideration of the site plan accompanying documents and the comments received from the staff, peer review consultant, the department recommends the Board approve the Certificate of Consistency under Quincy Center Urban Revitalization District Plan as amended and as defined within the Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title 17, Section 8.3 Quincy Center District, Quincy Center Urban Revitalization District, Urban Renewal Uses, Section 9.3.3 Planning Board Rules and Regs, and Section 10 under Definitions, and in accordance with Section 12.02, Section 3, subsection 3, Section 2, Overall Redevelopment Strategy of the Quincy Center Urban Revitalization Development Plan as amended, subject to the below-listed special and general conditions. Special Condition 1, excuse me, the applicant shall comply with the City of Quincy Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance, Section 7. The applicant shall submit an IZO application to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee prior to the issuance of a building permit. A decision by the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee shall be made on the subject property prior to the issuance of a temporary or final occupancy permit. Number 2, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide to the planning department evidence of satisfying the Quincy Center Public Art and Pleasmaking Ordinance. 3, the applicant has executed a land disposition agreement dated October 15th, 2025, and an urban redevelopment covenant dated October 15th, 2025 pursuant to the Quincy Center Urban Revitalization District Plan as amended. Prior to the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy, the proponent shall provide the planning director evidence that a certificate of completion has been issued in accordance with the provisions of the LDA and the URC, and that the following documents have been executed: closing documents on the disposition of 1630 Hancock Street, easement or other documentation for pedestrian access over the subject property, and any necessary utility easements across the applicant's site. Special Condition Number 4, the applicant and the planning department have worked in concert with the city solicitor to address concerns raised by the planning board members during the August 6th meeting regarding Hancock Street access and the proposed dumpster transformer locations. The applicant has agreed to access the dumpster and to locate the transformer and associated infrastructure on a property located at 29 Mechanic Street. This agreement is the result of a representation by the city that it will grant an easement over the property located at 29 Mechanic Street upon consummation of the pending acquisition of the property by the city. This easement shall include covenants necessary to allow for the applicant's access and use of 29 Mechanic Street site in a manner acceptable to the city. Special Condition 5, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit a stormwater permit that contains final details of the drainage system and supporting calculations to the city engineer office for review and approval. 6, the applicant shall coordinate with appropriate city departments to identify all necessary permits, such that applications can be reviewed as needed by the city and peer review consultants. It is anticipated that necessary permits will include the City of Quincy Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance Permit, City of Quincy Drain Permit, and Street Opening Permits. This list is not intended to be comprehensive, and additional permits may be necessary. 7, the nature and scope of the proposed project has been previously reviewed under the MIPR Certificate of the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs on the final environmental impact report for the new Quincy Center dated December 14th, 2012, noted as EEA Number 14780. The certificate. Under the certificate, the city has assumed the role of the redeveloper, and as such, shall be responsible for the performance of any and all mitigation applicable to the proposed project under the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. The applicant shall cooperate with the city on any reporting requirements that involve the proposed redevelopment project. 8, the applicant shall submit a construction management plan to the Department of Inspection Services to be filed and approved prior to the issuance of a building permit. This shall include the locations of stockpile indoor staging areas for construction equipment and materials. The applicant shall also address construction period traffic impacts by providing a detailed sequence of construction and addressing any space constraints, and detailing how they will be addressed as construction progresses. 9, the applicant shall reconstruct the sidewalk along the entire property frontage of Hancock Street, Elm Street, and Mechanic Street with new cement-concrete sidewalk, brim finished with border and tool joints. Reset or replace granite curbing. Build enhanced tree pits as shown on engineering sheet C301, prepared by Bowler Engineering, dated October 14th, 2025. Install new street trees as shown on landscape on sheet L100, prepared by Bowler Engineering, dated August 22nd, 2025, and replace the two existing light poles on Elm Street with decorative streetlights. The applicant shall provide ADA and AAB-compliant sidewalks and wheelchair ramps at all crosswalks within the project site. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit a final engineered sidewalk plan to the Department of Public Works and Department of Traffic Parking Alarm and Lighting for review and approval. Number 10, excuse me, per Section 3E recitals of the LDA dated October 15th, 2025, and Section 1 of the Urban Renewal Covenant dated October 15th, 2025, the redeveloper will provide its own parking facilities and bear its associated costs in lieu of using the city's shared parking facilities, and thus satisfying the redevelopers' obligations to contribute to the city's infrastructure. Therefore, future tenants of the development shall be prohibited from obtaining parking passes in any off-street public parking facilities, and shall be prohibited from participation in the city's resident parking program. 11, this section of Hancock Street was repaved in 2023. The applicant must obtain from the Commissioner of Public Works to perform work on Hancock Street before 2029. The applicant shall be responsible for restoring the roadway curbing and sidewalk to finished condition once construction activities have concluded. 12, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall perform a water flow test with the city's water department. 13, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the existing sewer main and manhole shall be inspected with television pre-development in order to check the condition of the system. The proposed sewer service, pipe, and connection to the main shall be inspected with television post-development. The television reports shall be submitted to the Department of Public Works for assessment. 14, one week prior to any land disturbance activities, the applicant shall conduct an onsite inspection with the Department of Public Works and/or city's designated representative to observe the erosion controls installed at the site and to review the erosion controls to be employed during construction. 15, the Department of Public Works and/or the city's designated representative shall observe the construction of the stormwater management system at the following times: upon completion of excavation, upon completion of chamber and crushstone installation, and prior to backfilling. The applicant shall provide at least 72 hours' notice for said inspections. 16, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the applicant shall submit and record at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds an operation and maintenance plan for the project stormwater system, which shall include the following: stormwater management system owners and party or parties responsible for operation and maintenance, schedule for all routine and nonroutine maintenance tasks to be undertaken, snow management plan showing snow storage areas and locations of all stormwater BMPs and each treatment drain along with discharge points. Inspections shall be conducted by a qualified professional, such as a civil engineer or environmental engineer. 17, the applicant shall consult with the Quincy Health Department on noise mitigation measures for project-related noise generating activities to comply with local and state regulations. 18, the applicant shall conduct a pre-demolition asbestos survey. If there's any, excuse me, if there's any asbestos-containing materials present, they must be removed by a licensed contractor, and a post-abatement inspection must be performed by a DLI-certified project monitor. A walkthrough inspection conducted by the Quincy Health Department is required prior to demolition. Excuse me. The applicant shall submit a written rodent control plan to the Health Department for review and approval. Prior to any site activity, said plan must be designed for the duration of the project and include at minimum the name and contact information of a licensed pest control operator to be retained by the project proponent for the duration of the project. Scope of the proposed plan for the control of rodents included number, location, and frequency of monitoring bait stations, and anticipated length of service, and a summary of actions to be taken to prevent rodent problems at the construction site. Special Condition 20, the applicant shall develop and submit a written dust control plan to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to any site activity. Said dust control plan is to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. 21, the applicant has provided a proposed signage plan. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall submit a final sign plan package to the planning department for review and approval. The submittal shall identify the location, design, and installation of all signs associated with the proposed project. To the extent the applicant has not yet determined a final tenant or other signage at the time of the submittal, the applicant may submit design criteria to account for such signs and incorporation. As tenants for the retail component of the proposed project are determined, such tenants shall be responsible for submitting a proposed retail signage application to the planning department for review and approval. 22, the applicant shall install stone or concrete monuments to delineate the public right-of-way. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. 23, the applicant shall submit an AutoCAD file for the project at the time of the building permit submission. Files should be in mass state plane coordinate systems, and preferably in Quincy standard data layers. 24, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall submit a report including certified ASBIL plan from a professional engineer or surveyor, certifying that the stormwater management system has been constructed in accordance with the approved plans. The report should include a certification that the excavations of the proposed system were inspected prior to backfilling. Applicant should also provide the city engineer the digital file ASBIL plan showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site, facilities, and rights of way, along with an AutoCAD file. The ASBIL plan shall be in mass state plane coordinate system. The plan should be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer. 25, upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit a stamped affidavit from a registered professional engineer that all the utilities, water, sewer, and drain are constructed as designed, and no illicit connections are found on the completed project site. That would conclude the department's recommendation.
Okay, great. Does anybody have any questions? Is there a motion to approve consistent with the department's recommendation?
Chair, make a motion that we approve the 1630 Hancock Street project, along with these 25 special conditions read it from Mr. Stevens.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So that's a member Kelly, a member Foley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Solicitor Timmons.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me just take it out.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is Continued Public Hearing, 80 Independence Avenue, Planning Board Case Number 2025-14. Attorney Foley.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Patrick Foley. I'm the attorney for the project here tonight. I'm joined inside by Brian Saluti, who's our architect. Our engineer, Jed Hannon, has the flu. He's going to be unable to make it here tonight. Any engineering questions? Co-owner Micah Hearn is well-equipped to handle that. Last month, we gave a full presentation on a four-unit proposal on 80 Independence Avenue. My name is Patrick Foley. I'm the attorney for the project here tonight. I'm joined inside by Brian Saluti, who's our architect. Our engineer, Jed Hannon, has the flu. He's going to be unable to make it here tonight. Any engineering questions? Co-owner Mike Ahern is well-equipped to handle that. Last month, we gave a full presentation on a four-unit proposal on 80 Independence Avenue. In the last month, we've had a productive meet and went in the butter. We addressed some of the small concerns that came up at our hearing, as well as answer all of our peer review questions. So Brian is just going to go through some of the slight changes that we made and how we address some of the peer review issues.
Okay, great. Thank you. We'll give Joe a second to pull it up.
Good evening, board. My name is Brian Saluti. I'm the architect for the project. And the name of my company is Brian Saluti Architect, and I'm out of Weymouth. And as I scroll through these drawings, I'm going to address the architectural-related questions that were brought up by the peer review report provided by Beals &amp; Thomas dated October 2, 2025. Plus, I'll cover a few issues that were brought up by this planning board during the last meeting. So, let's go back. So this is an aerial of the site. Nothing changed. The building is highlighted in yellow, and I just want to point out that it fronts Independence Ave. And it also fronts Parsons Street on three different sides, the left, the right, and the rear. And it has no adjoining adjacent butters. So it's basically an island. So this next drawing, SP1, no changes here, but I'm trying to distinguish the footprint of the existing building, which is in yellow, and the proposed buildings in red. And there's a significant change in the size of the footprint, obviously, of the proposed building. So nothing changed here. Now, this is the A1 drawing. If we focus on the colored ground floor level there, the peer reviewer brought up the fact that the sidewalk out front has been redone and reconstructed. Basically, if I remember right, it was maybe three foot wide. I'm not sure if it was asphalt or concrete, but I kind of...
Yeah, concrete.
So as a result, I redrew the public sidewalk just to reflect what's out there. It's basically six foot wide, and then it narrows down around the tree. It has no effect to the existing building or the property there, and it shouldn't have any effect on the proposed project as well. Now, I remember some concerns from the last meeting about backing out the cars, out of the garages, and dimensions, that sort of thing. So I labeled the more critical ones, but they're well over the 24-foot requirements. If you look on the right, on the right-of-way side, from the garage to the edge of the other side of the right-of-way, there's 28 feet if I'm reading it right. And then on the left side of Parsons, you can see there's a setback of 30 feet from the garage door to the street line. So there's no issues there. Now, the peer review report mentions ADA access. These are townhome condominiums for sale. Generally, townhomes are exempt from the ADA regs because the ADA primarily applies to public accommodation in commercial facilities and not private residences. So I'll leave it at that. And then one other comment on this drawing was the peer review report brought up mechanical equipment and HVAC ductwork and that sort of thing was missing. And, you know, I've never have done preliminary drawings with that shown. That's usually done during the construction drawing phase. But I did actually locate four separate mechanical rooms on the plans for each unit. You can see in a little closet area, there's a square, and it says boiler in it. And then there's a circle below it, and that says HWH. It's a hot water heater. And so those have been identified. They were always there. They were there from the last time. I mean, I'm thinking maybe the peer reviewer is asking about condension units, but they didn't. But if I was going to put condension units here, it most likely, first of all, would be a design-build item. But there's two ways to go. You could put them on a pad and locate them at all four corners, one per unit. And/or, what's really popular today is you put the condension units, you mount them to the building. And, you know, they might stick out about 10 inches, that sort of thing. And they're up high, so they don't get messed with by the public. And that's it for this drawing. In the A2 drawing, there's two changes here. One was from the peer review report, mentioned that the height of the building was 36 feet. That's been changed to 35 feet. Only a differential of a foot, but I made the change. And also, the board brought up during the last meeting, the front elevation on Independence Ave was, I don't know how to describe it, but it had utility doors there before, right in the middle. And so I changed those out to be more compatible to the other two entrance doors that are there, and added a little shed roof as well, protection from the weather. And I can show you that enlarged on a sketch to follow. So this is an aerial sketch. It shows the proposed project in the middle of both sides of Parsons Street. It also illustrates your butters in white. And just to refresh your memory, there's a three-unit apartment building on the left, followed by a parking garage that goes with that apartment building. And behind the three-car parking garage is a duplex that was squeezed in there. And next to that, to the right, is a three-family apartment building. And down in the right-hand corner is a modest-sized, single-family residence. This is another aerial sketch. It shows the right-of-way side of the project with the lot line shown. And you can see that the lot line goes kind of like right down the middle of the road, and that's been respected. You can also see the design of the roof. It's a rather large hip with gables on all sides of the building. And then SK4, this drawing didn't change, but the peer review made a comment about colors, you know, the lack of renderings with color on it. So the intent here was just to have a light gray on the upper half of the building and a darker gray on the bottom. That was the design intent. But I don't see that as an issue. Next, you can see the color's a little clearer here, I guess. So this shows the changes that we made at the sprinkler room. This facade faces Independence Ave, and you can see the same-style residential entry doors with a small shed. And I think for identity purposes, you might develop, or might want to consider putting, I don't know, a sign over the sprinkler room door saying Fire Department. And perhaps there's a red beacon to the right side of the door. And it's probably a nice spot to put the Siamese connections for the Fire Department hookup in case it's, I'm not sure it's required, but the building is required to be sprinkled. That much I can tell you. So SK5, this is showing the rear of the building with the guest parking. Nothing has changed here. And the last sketch is this one here. This, again, is focusing on the right-of-way side, going right down the middle of the road there, and that's been respected. And if you look way down the end where the duplex is next to that three-car garage to the left, I just want to bring up the point that this road down that end has been widened from 15 feet to 19 feet, so that there's a more comfortable turning radius there at the end for, you know, like emergency vehicles, that sort of thing. And also, it benefits the folks on Parsons Street. And so that's kind of all the issues that I can think of.
Okay. All right. Yeah, let me see if anybody has any questions for you on this side. Yes.
I just have a comment on the doors in the front. I like that a little dome is over them and they redesigned it. The word you were looking for was ugly, because it was really ugly. And now it's not quite as ugly. You got a little makeup on it. It looks a little better, I think. And maybe you should do it to the same on the door in the back there as well, the other sprinkler door. Right? I mean, if you're gonna...
Didn't I do it on the other?
Probably cheaper by buying four.
I got them there. Well, I got a little overhang over there.
Yeah, but I mean, you still have a pretty good...
That's what your butters in the back, the two butters in the back are going to be staring at that.
Yeah. So maybe we make that door look like the door in the front.
Yeah.
Sure. I can do that.
Just saying.
It's harmless. Sure. We can do that.
Okay. Anything?
I'm good.
Okay.
I jumped in. I agree.
Boy, you really picked on that door.
It's ugly. I mean...
I'm just, I'm okay with it.
Okay, so let me see if anybody from the public has any comment. So this is 80 Independence Avenue, Special Permit Site Plan Review, Case Number 2025-14. It is a public hearing, so if you'd like to speak, you can raise your hand. We do have sign-in sheets as well in the window wall. And again, I'll give the call. 80 Independence Ave, Planning Board, Case Number 2025-14. Okay. Hearing none. Are you all set? Attorney Foley, just want to make sure.
We're all set, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. So with that, I think we have enough information to make a decision. So is there a motion to close?
So be it.
Okay. So be it.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. And does the department have a recommendation?
Madam Chair, can I just?
Yes.
I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I did review the minutes of the meeting, so I do leave everything to the board on this.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, I was also going to mention that. Mr. Kelly was in utilizing the Mullins Rule.
Okay, great.
So he's all caught up and eligible to participate on this case. With that, after consideration of the site plan accompanying documents and the comments received from city staff, and the peer review consultant, the department recommends the board approve site plan review under Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1, Site Plan Review, and special permit under Section 5.1.17, Parking waiver subject to the below-listed special and general conditions. One, the applicant shall obtain all applicable findings, variances, and special permits if needed from the City of Quincy Zoning Board of Appeal. Two, the applicant shall submit a construction management plan to be filed and approved prior to the issuance of a building permit. This shall include the locations of stockpile indoor staging areas for construction equipment and materials. The applicant shall also address construction period, excuse me, a little frog type, construction period traffic impacts by providing a detailed sequence of construction and addressing any space constraints and detailing how they'll be addressed as construction progresses. Number three, the applicant shall reconstruct the sidewalk along the entire property frontage on Independence Avenue with, let me, I got to pause here.
We're not going to touch the sidewalk.
Not touching the sidewalk. Okay. Joe, did we catch up with that? On the new sidewalk, was that a comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I'll modify it, because I think there was an attempt in an original comment to try to save a very butchered tree out on the street edge. So the applicant shall work cooperatively with the Department of Public Works on the need for reconstruction of the sidewalk along the entire property frontage of Independence Avenue. That would be special condition number three. So that'd be just check in with the DPW and work with them. Perhaps one panel, you know, for utility tie-in could be impacted and replaced, but we'll put that into the DPW, into their city engineer's hands. Special Condition Four, the applicant shall perform additional soil tests during construction to verify the level of water, of the water table and the underlying soil conditions. Any modifications to the stormwater management system as a result of differing soil conditions shall be submitted to the Department of Public Works for review and approval. Five, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall perform a water flow test with the city's water department. Six, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the existing sewer main and manholes shall be inspected with television pre-development in order to check the condition of the system. The proposed sewer service, pipe, and the connection to the main shall be inspected with the television post-development. Television reports shall be submitted to the Department of Public Works for assessment. Seven, one week prior to any land disturbance activities, the applicant shall conduct an onsite inspection with the Department of Public Works and/or the city's designated representative to observe the erosion controls installed at the site and to review the erosion controls to be employed during construction. Eight, the Department of Public Works and/or the city's designated representative shall observe the construction of the stormwater management system at the following times: upon completion of excavation, upon completion of chamber and crushstone installation, and prior to backfilling. Applicants shall provide at least 72 hours' notice for said inspections. Number nine, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the applicant shall submit and record at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds an operation and maintenance plan for the project's stormwater system, which shall include the stormwater management system owner, an estimated operations and maintenance budget, schedule for all routine and nonroutine maintenance tasks to be undertaken, snow management plans showing snow storage areas and locations of all stormwater BMPs and each treatment drain along with the discharge points. Inspections shall be conducted by a qualified professional such as a civil engineer or environmental engineer. Ten, the applicant shall conduct a pre-demolition hazardous material survey, i.e. asbestos-containing materials, fluorescent lights, PCB-containing materials, including ballast, mercury-containing thermostats, and switches, et cetera, and provide a copy of the survey to the Quincy Health Department. If hazardous materials are found in the buildings to be demolished, the applicant or its licensed abatement contractor shall consult with the Quincy Health Department regarding abatement measures and monitoring of abatement work. Eleven, the applicant shall consult with the Quincy Health Department on noise mitigation measures for construction-related noise generating activities to comply with local and state regulations. Twelve, the applicant shall submit a written rodent control plan to the Quincy Health Department for review and approval prior to any site activity. Said plan must be designed for the duration of the project and include the name and contact information of a licensed pest control operator to be retained by the project proponent for the duration of the project. Scope of the proposed plan for the control of rodents, including number, location, and monitoring frequency of bait stations, as well as the anticipated length of service. Thirteen, the applicant shall develop and submit a written dust control plan to the Quincy Health Department for review and approval prior to any site activity. Said dust control plan is to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. Fourteen, the applicant shall install a stone or concrete monuments to delineate the public right-of-way. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Fifteen, the applicant shall submit an AutoCAD plan, a file for the project prior to the issuance of a building permit. The files should be in Mass State Plane Coordinate Systems and preferably in Quincy standard data layers. Sixteen, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall submit a report including certified ASBIL plan from a professional engineer or surveyor certifying that the stormwater management system has been constructed in accordance with the approved plans. The report should include a certification that the excavation of the proposed system were inspected prior to backfilling. Applicants shall also provide to the city engineer the digital file ASBIL plan showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, benchmarks, and benchmarks defining the total site, facilities, and rights-of-way along with an AutoCAD file. The ASBIL plan shall be in Mass State Plane Coordinate System. The plan should be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or engineer. Upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit a stamped affidavit from a registered professional engineer that all utilities, water, sewer, and drain are constructed as designed and no illicit connections are found on the completed project site. That would conclude the department's recommendation.
Thank you. And I do just want to add, hopefully as a condition of evote to approve, the change to the rear elevation doors, so that's consistent with the front elevation as we discussed tonight as well, as a condition of the approval. So is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, just a point of clarification. I just want to verify, that tree out front on the sidewalk, that is going to be maintained and protected. Is that correct? Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much.
And Madam Chair, can I make one comment as well? I know I kind of beat you up a little bit about the doors and stuff like that. I drove up here two weeks ago and drove around the property. I think that you guys are going to help the neighborhood here. It's going to bring up the property values, I believe, on either side of the property as well. So I may have beat you up a little bit on the doors, but in the end, you're going to get more money for your project, because it's going to be better-looking, I think. It's going to make the neighbors, I think, happier, because it's going to bring up their value. values, and we're going to get more tax revenue out of something that was kind of like an eyesore, not really that good for the neighborhood. So, no, I didn't mean to beat you up, but it's like, I like what you've done here. I commend you for what you're doing. I think it looks good. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes.
Yep, Madam Chair, I think with your comment, after every project that the board approves, the proponent owes us three final plan sets that all of the comments catch up. So I think to the condition you were looking for, you know, we can add that, you know, with the final plan set submission will reflect the change in elevation or the language that you would present.
Great.
And that should work fine.
Great. So is there a motion to approve, consistent with the department's recommendation as it's been modified and discussed tonight?
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good job. Never call.
Thank you.
Okay.
I guess...
Oh, and then we're opening those. No? Oh, okay. No, it's small. All right, so the next item on the agenda is a new public hearing, 3 Thayer Street, Planning Board Case Number 2025-15. This public hearing shall be conducted to review the application of Boston Property Management LLC, 500 Victory Road, 3rd floor, Quincy, Mass. 02171, for site plan review under Quincy zoning ordinance title 17, section 9.5.1, site plan review, and special permit under section 5.1.17, parking waiver. The applicant proposes the demolition of the existing building and the construction of a new three-story, eight-unit multifamily building with parking on the grade level and surface parking consisting of 13 total spaces. The proposal will also include professionally-designed drainage controls and landscaping. The property contains 9,220... excuse me, 9,202 square feet of land and is located at 3 Thayer Street. The subject property is located within a business C zoning district and shown on a surveyor's map, 1155 Lot 8. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Boston Property Management LLC. I'm joined tonight by Peter McLaughlin and John Hanson from Boston Property Management, and Chi Man from Hardy Man. Chi will talk about the drainage in more detail in a moment, and Glenn Hoffman from GPH Design, who is the architect on this project and will speak to the architectural aspects of the proposal. Peter and John and Boston Property Management have a long history in this neighborhood. They developed the Temple Beth El, which was at 999 Hancock Street, which is essentially, which is directly across the street from this site on Bridge Street. They also developed the 60... the units at 23 Bridge Street, also a large multifamily development at that time. Both of those properties represented a complete redevelopment of this particular neighborhood. And this proposal, and this project, is located at 3 Thayer Street, which is on the corner of Thayer and Bridge Street. It's directly across from those two developments that I just mentioned. And this site has been utilized as a boarding house for a number of years, really not in character with the new residential aspects of this neighborhood. This, as you indicated, Madam Chair, this property is a 9,202 square-foot parcel of land. It's located within a business C zoning district in very close proximity to the downtown Quincy Center. And as I said, it was formerly used as a boarding house and is located within the business C zoning district. So this applicant, who has, as I said, has a history in this neighborhood, is proposing to raise the boarding house, eliminate the boarding house use from this site, and replace it with a new constructed, a private residential property consisting of three stories and eight multifamily units. There'll be garage parking under the building as well as surface parking, essentially where the surface parking exists today for the boarding house. And that will provide for 13 parking spaces, which is actually in compliance with the business C zoning requirements of 1.5 spaces per unit. The parking will be accessible off of Bridge Street via two vehicular driveways, one driveway going into the garage, and the second driveway going into the parking lot in the rear of the property. And the site will be, for the first time, will have professional drainage control measures. Will deal with runoff from the site and control the drainage from that property. And significant landscaping improvements will be made to the site, both on Thayer Street, on the corner of Bridge, and along the back of the building as well. And there's a landscape plan that's part of the package that we provided that was designed by Karen Goslin. As you indicated, Madam Chair, we are requesting two aspects of relief from this board. One is site plan approval, and the second is special permit parking waiver. The parking waiver, however, does not deal with the number of spaces. As I indicated, we're in compliance with zoning. We're only asking for the parking waiver with regard to setbacks, because the business C requires a setback of 10 feet from the building and 10 feet from the property line, and we're less than those requirements, because we're parking along the back of the building and about six and a half feet from the property line, or 6.3 feet from the property line. So what I'd like to do, if I may, is ask Chi Man just to kind of walk through the site-related plans, and then I'm going to have Glenn talk about the architectural plans in more detail. Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Chi Man from Hardy Man Design Group, 1285 Washington Street in Weymouth. I'm a registered civil engineer in charge of the design of this project. Again, the site is roughly about 9,202 square feet. Currently, there's no drainage control on the site. The rainfall runoff basically hit the roof and also the parking area and the landscape area, and then just sheet flowed out to Bridge Street and Thayer Street and collapsed by the catch basin on the street and drained down into the city storm drain system. With the new design, we are increasing, a slight increase of the impervious coverage of the site. It's about 1,474 square feet increase in impervious area. However, most of the area is the roof. We have designed a roof collection system, and on-site we have a nine-unit of COTEC system, their underground retention system, art shape, backfill of crushstone. So basically, we'll be collecting all the roof runoff and also the parking lot runoff, not actually parking lot, it's the driveway that accesses the parking area. That will be retained into the recharge system and infiltrate into the ground. Mostly, the volume of the system is going to be capture most of the runoff, a little bit, you know, on the highest storm, like 25 or 100 years' storm, there's a little bit of overflow that will be discharged into the city storm drain system. But in overall, we have a huge reductions, probably like 80, 90% reductions on all the storm. But the two-year storm, we basically capture all the runoff and recharge on-site. So it's going to be a huge improvement on the stormwater in terms of, you know, flood control and also water quality, because the stormwater is going to be treated before we dispose of the site. As far as the site access, we have one curb cut close to the intersection that access to the internal parking. By the way, all the parking are under the building footprint, except for the second curb cut is the driveway to access the five parking that's under the building. And we have a layout, a concrete pad at the end of the driveway for a small dumpster, so the resident can bring their trash down and put it into the dumpster. And around the perimeter of the site, we'll have a new privacy fence to provide privacy, both the neighbors and also the site residents. The site is going to be serviced by the city domestic water system, and also the city's... the building is going to have fire protection sprinkler system. Also proposing a gas connections. And just one touch up that is Bridge Street and Thayer Street has recently been paved by the city. Concrete sidewalk, new curbs are put in, so we'll be working with the DPW for any trench repair. We are proposing to mill and overlay whatever we disturb on the brand-new pavement, will probably go like 20 feet on either side of the trenches. And also, the sidewalk is pretty much brand-new, but we'll be putting a new curb cut, and so we'll be working with the city to restore any of the, you know, affected brand-new sidewalk. So. Any questions?
I think we'll continue, and if we have questions, we'll ask them all at the end. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Glenn Hoffman, I'm principal of GPH Design Architecture and Plan. I'm located in 1 Adam Street in Milton, Massachusetts. If we could go to the first site plan, which we talked about a little bit earlier. That's fine, perfect, thank you. I'll give you a quick description. What we're proposing for this building is eight total units. Two units would be two bedrooms, two... I'm sorry, forgive me. Four units would be two bedrooms, four units would be two bedrooms, and plus a den. The total area for the bill on the ground floor where the parking is located is 3,892, that's including the parking. The first and the second floors are both 4,906 square feet gross square feet. Total building of living area is 9,812, and the total building, including the parking, would be 13,704. The building is three stories, as we discussed. The first level is mainly parking with some circulation entrance lobby. The second and third floor are the living spaces. The... if we could go to the rendering, talk about the building materials. The materials we're proposing for this building, the first floor will be architectural-grade sandblasted concrete masonry units. We think this is appropriate for first level. It's durable, it'll fit in with the neighborhood. The two floors above will be a mix of cementitious slap siding and cementitious panels with aluminum channels. We're talking about doing a fiberglass window system, EPDM roof. As you saw in the site plan, we're also proposing porous pavers at the entrance to the garage and to the entrance to the building. The approximate height of the building is going to be around 32 feet. With that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, let me see if anybody has...
Thank you.
I have a question. What is a fiberglass window system? What do you know about that?
That means the window system, it's made out of fiberglass. It's not aluminum, it's not wood clad. It's actual fiberglass.
So it doesn't, won't rot?
It won't rot. It's very efficient thermally. A lot of the residential projects going on in Quincy and Boston are using fiberglass windows now, yeah.
Are these going to be apartments or condos? Do you tell us condos?
I believe condos, thank you. So I'll make sure. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of quick questions. Just going through the plans, I don't see anywhere where there's a transformer coming into the building. Where's the power coming into the building? Are you having a transformer outside, or are you coming in with just pipes?
I believe we do well have an transformer. We haven't addressed those issues as of yet.
Okay, so it's going to be located somewhere, obviously, outside.
Yeah, John, you're probably also interested. I'm thinking we're going to do electric heat pumps, which makes sense for this building. The gas would strictly be for appliances, not for the heat system.
Okay. I mean, it's a nice-looking building.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay. I don't have any questions right now. This is a public hearing, so I'll open it up for comment, if anybody has it. So this is 3 Thayer Street, Planning Board Case 2025-15. Anyone wishing to speak on this, you can raise your hand. We also have sign-in sheets on the side if you'd like to sign in. And again, it's 3 Thayer Street, Planning Board Case 2025-15. Okay. And I think we will continue it, because we need the peer review to take place.
Is it one month?
Yes, one month, fine for you.
Yeah, one month will be ideal, if we could. Thank you.
November 19th?
November 19th it is. Thank you.
Okay. So is there a motion?
Motion to move until November 19th.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we just have some business meeting, new business, vote to affirm the board's endorsement of approval-not-rerequired plan for 36 Mill Street, an approval-not-required plan for 55 Bayview Ave., and 3 Minnehans Lane.
Yeah. Madam Chair, through you to the board. Yes, at the last meeting, the board did go ahead and endorse the A&R plan for 36 Mill Street, so we just wanted to note that on this agenda. We received three new A&R plans on this turn. One is for 55 Bayview Ave. It does split lots, creates a new lot, but the zoning board of appeal did approve that in April of 2025. The next one, approval-not-required, was 3 Minnehans Lane. That's an A&R plan we've seen before. However, there was a correction made that added another four-foot strip. In talking with the proponent, I said, why don't you just refile a fresh plan versus amending an old one? So that's what 3 Minnehans Lane is. The other one is 37 Narragansett. That's another one similar to Bayview, where it's a split lot that the zoning board back in its June meeting had approved the development on the second lot. So these are just the A&R plans addressing those property lines. I am going to jump one, and I wanted to notify the board that the department has engaged with a consultant to update the transit-oriented district guidelines. Now, we had them in place for the North Quincy area, and in the spring, the city council had expanded that TOD district to cover both Center Street and Crown Colony, so the department is in the process of updating it. What essentially we're doing is just adding the new maps of those new districts. The content of the guidelines are staying the same, and you should expect to hear a little bit more of a robust presentation from the department at a future meeting, but I just wanted to note that. And then the final business item would be the departure of our former board member, Mr. Larry Leuzo, leaves a vacancy in our leadership for vice chair, and if the board is willing to consider nominations for a new vice chair, we felt this would be the right time to do that.
Sure. Does anybody have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Member Kelly, position of vice chairman.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other nominations? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No? Okay, great.
Thank you. Here you go.
I was going to have some fun with that, but...
All right, so that concludes our meeting. Thank you.
We're still on TV.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.